There you go. I'll be abstaining number six.
Yes.
Good evening, I call this meeting to order, please stand for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you for joining us this evening. Be advised in the event of a fire emergency and alarm will sound, please know all emergency exits evacuate well away from the building. At this time we request you turn your phones to silent, thank you very much. It's been brought to my attention that there is significant parking issues outside. In an attempt to make sure everyone gets here that needs to be or wants to be, I would suggest we make someone make a motion to delay maybe fifteen minutes to make sure everybody that wants to get this meeting is able to, it's a very important need.
I'd be happy to make a motion to pause for fifteen minutes.
Can I have a second?
All second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, at this time we will close. I'm going to adjourn this meeting for fifteen minutes. We're all at the Board of Education, adjourn the meeting of May twenty-third, twenty twenty-five, for fifteen minutes until approximately six fifteen. Can I have a motion please?
I'll make it.
A second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, we'll be back.
Sorry.
Exists inside of it, the types of things that we have planned for to take care of our students. And of course, taking care of our facilities and the investment that the community has already made in this campus are of high priority. So this budget, the 2526 budget, does take care of providing a safe and secure facility and infrastructure for all of our kids. And it also offers high-quality instruction. There are no cuts proposed in this budget to any programs that we offer here on our campus. So from pre-K to 12, from our advanced placement courses, our dual enrollment courses, all of our extracurriculars that we offer in terms of clubs and activities, and of course, our athletic programs. And so I just want to talk about for me, the importance of making sure that every Raider comes to school every day, that they find opportunities that make them feel like they are connected to our school. Because we humbly believe in the research supports that when kids are connected to our school, they do better academically. This budget does all of those things. Revenue sources. So as I begin to talk to the board this evening about your choices, about your options that we've laid in front of you, really, the board can do two things. The board can make a decision to go back out to the community for a second vote. Or you can make the decision that you don't want to go to a second vote and you want to run a contingent budget. That really is the two decisions that you have in front of you. So tonight, I want to talk a little bit about the options within those two decisions to help the board learn a little bit, pose questions, and kind of get a sense of the direction that you want to go. So what I'm going to show you first is really our revenue sources. So in our proposed budget, as we were moving into 2526, you'll actually see on the slide here how we had originally proposed to raise the money to take care of the budget that we had. We did have a 2.3% tax levy. That's what our community has voted down. So in the slide that you're looking at now, and also would be my recommendation, is that we go out, back out to the community to vote a second time, but that we do, we take that percent tax levy from 2.3% down to a 0% increase. In doing that, that means that we have to go down on this slide to where you'll see the reserves that we use. So I wanted to draw your attention this evening that every year when we're building our budget, we actually do focus in on reserve spending. So we do have a reserve plan that has us taking the reserves, our savings accounts, and making sure that we're applying the reserves back to the build of the budget. The reserves do give us really great cushion to help make sure that we're taking care of the needs of our community as it comes in without having the tax rate from year to year really change dramatically. So this year's 2.3% really did put us in line with what the community has grown to expect from us, which I would say has always been slow and steady growth. So this year, if we're going to go back out and we go out at the 0%, in order to do that, I would recommend that we actually increase the amount of money from $1,135,000 out of our reserves to help fund this budget to $1,452,303 out of our reserves to fund this budget. That would be a 28% year to year, from last year to this, in terms of the increase. That still puts our budget at the exact same number that we originally appropriated, which is to spend the $21,660,678, which makes sure that we're running all of our programs with no cuts. In terms of our budget-to-budget increases, because I would not be making any recommendations for the board to be making any cuts or any eliminations in programs, the budget in terms of what was originally presented will look the same to you here in terms of budget-to-budget increases. The board does have another option. You could go back out for a vote to the community and instead of going out at a 0% tax levy, you could create a tax levy here this evening that runs anywhere from 0% tax levy to that 2.3%. That is at the board's discretion. When we do this and go back out at the 0%, if we decide to go at 0, I think what the board needs to understand and what the community needs to understand is that the budget would remain the same. So everything else that you've grown accustomed to seeing in this particular process, our three-part budget remains the same. Should the board decide that you want to do a different tax levy? Let's say this evening, pick a number and we decide that you, you decide that you want to go out at 1.5%. The difference there would be that we would still pull from reserves to take care of what would be left on the table. So we'd still have to expend reserves, although that would allow us to collect some money from the taxpayer. I do want to take a moment and pause just to say that part of what we understand inside the structure of how the schools function and the way the state functions in the property tax cap and how we have to calculate things, if you can imagine from a mathematical standpoint, 0 is really never good. So we know when we're collectively making some of the decisions around the budget development, that when we go out with something that is at a 0, next year, that 0 is going to find its way into the equations that drive the way our school is funded from here on out. As I mentioned, we do rely very heavily on state aid. And so you should know that this year, in the budget that the governor has now passed in the state of New York, they have actually created in there a pullback. If the federal government does not send the money to the state of New York that the state is expecting inside their budget, they have given a carve-out to take back up to 25% from the aid that they have sent to schools. So when we typically are thinking about how we build school budget and even how we use reserves, we feel very strongly that the reserves are for emergencies. If the state were to take back money from us, let's say that it's the worst-case scenario and it's at that 25%, we're talking about well over $2 million. So for us to have adequate reserves to be able to weather storms that are outside of our control, that's usually how we view the use of reserves. We are currently feeling like a budget being voted down by our community is an emergency. We wouldn't want to use reserves every year and over time to build our budgets and to take care of the needs of our programs. But we understand that we, we've left the community with more questions than what they had. So for us, the contingent budget, to me, is going to be the worst-case scenario. I want to move into that just a little bit. So if we go out, if we went to the 0%, you won't see, you won't see any change in terms of the tax increase. If we had to move to a contingent budget, the contingent budget is actually something I hope we never see in our time here. So we're going to talk a little bit about what a contingent budget is, but I want to tell you how we get there. As a Board of Education, you can make the decision this evening that you don't want to put the community through another vote. And you could move just to go straight to a contingent budget. If that's what the board decides to do, we have to reduce the amount of money that we're going to spend. So we will have to take our original proposal and we'll have to drop it down to the $21,446.84 that you see there. But that's not the worst part of a contingent budget. The worst part of the contingent budget is all the laws that follow. So if we go to a contingent budget, now I told you, the board can make that decision to do that this evening, but also if the community votes down a second budget that the board puts up for them to vote on, we will be in a contingent budget. So there's two ways to get there. The board can choose it this evening, or the second negative vote for us would put us in a contingent budget phase. So in contingent budget, we had mapped out a capital outlay project where we were going to take care of some of the HVAC issues that are happening in this building. If we moved to contingent budget, we are not allowed to spend on capital. So the capital outlay project has to go. Something for us to consider. We put about $100,000 a year into a capital outlay project. When we spend that $100,000, we actually get the next year $86,000 back in building aid. So just thinking about how our budgets are built, we actually have, when we're generating aid, we're creating for ourselves both an expenditure and a revenue. So when we plan to expend in ways that generate aid, we get revenue back on the other side. Part of that is also helping us maintain that steadiness that we talked about, that we want to stay right around the 2%. If we are generating aid in all the areas that we can, we actually are creating for ourselves revenue coming back in the next year. So that's different, I would say, than any other business expense or anyone else that's running a business and trying to keep their books tight. What makes us different is that we do get about $86, about 86 cents back on every dollar when we spend on something that generates aid. So if we take the capital outlay project out, we will experience a drop, which we have grown accustomed to. So it builds on our budget and becomes cyclical. So the moment that we lose that, that actually next year, we'll have an $86,000 cut right out of the gate. So something to think about. Also, it eliminates all of our equipment purchases. So if we need a piece of equipment, or if I should say, if we want a piece of equipment in order to keep our facilities running and things going well, on a contingent budget, we are not allowed to do that. We also have to eliminate certain student supplies. So we have gotten a little bit better, I would say, at creating those lists of things that kids need to bring from home to be successful in school by making sure that teachers are putting those supplies into their own supply purchasing. Under a contingent budget, we would not be allowed to buy and give things to kids, student supplies that we should consider should be coming from someplace else. So paper and pencils, and I know that sounds so silly, but the contingent budget would actually come with a lot of constraints for us and we would have to change a lot of our practices. Eliminating salary increases for those not under collective bargaining. There are very few members of our faculty, staff, that are not under collective bargaining, but there are a couple that are carve-outs there. The thing that I think is going to be most detrimental to us is that if we go to a contingent budget, by law, not by us, not our choice, the law says that we will not be allowed to have our taxpayers use our facilities unless we can actually get pretty good at estimating what the cost will be for using the facility and that we must charge upfront for its use. So for us, we have always been a school district that is very open to our community. We allow our community to use our facilities without charge. Even if youth football is coming and they want to turn on the lights in the stadium, these kinds of things would be not allowable. So just some clarity. Let's say that our little league kids want to play T-ball out on the front yard of the elementary school. That would be no cost to us, right? That we could allow. But the second, any member of our community wanted to use a facility and the lights have to be turned on, we would have to find ways to charge for all of that in fair ways. That, from what I understand from legal counsel, and so I, this is new, this is new territory for me. So what I understand from legal counsel is it's almost impossible to really get that finite number when you're talking about utilities. And so it almost rules out the ability to even charge for the use of your facility. It would shut us down in ways to our community that we wouldn't appreciate. There's also a component of a contingent budget where the administrative component, not administrators, the administrative component, all the things that it takes in order to run the administrative side of the house, that would be everything from some of our copying and printing to our legal expenses. Those particular expenses also have to go back to last year's levels. The other thing I would like to talk about this evening is our bus purchase. So as you know, the purchase of our bus also went down in this last vote. So I want to talk a little bit about our options here. I see it very similarly. We have three options. The easiest, that I didn't even have up here as your option, is we can say, listen, we, the community is concerned about spending money and we aren't going to ask them for a bus. So the option that you don't see is that we just take the bus right off the table. We go after the budgetary component to make sure that our schools are running and that we have all of our programs. What would that do to us in terms of transportation? Well, we typically run our buses anywhere from 10 to 13 years before we're beginning to retire them. Upon retiring them, they actually stay in our fleet. They don't automatically go to auction. They stay in our fleet and they get used for shorter runs, field trips, things that don't need or don't have as much wear and tear. We could survive a year without buying a bus, but we couldn't make it another, right? So next year, we would either have to buy two buses or we would just say, we're off in our, in our rotation. We do get aid back on the purchase of a bus. So we're kind of back where we were with the capital outlay project. We have always bought a bus, which means we get the aid back. The minute we don't buy the bus, we don't get the aid. So we're going to be back in that little bit more deficit. So each time we're talking about aid not coming back through, you're dropping next year's expenditures in terms of, we won't have revenue. So something to think about. So your two options that I see in front of you, you can go back out with the exact same proposition, which was to ask the community for permission to buy a bus and to ask the community for, to, basically to charge via tax collection for, for the bus. We would then finance the bus and over the course of five years, we would continue to collect on paying for the bus that way. Option two is that in order to get this bus, the voters could actually approve through proposition the use of 200,000, up to $200,000 out of the 2023 vehicle and equipment reserve. They would also then approve the purchase of the bus using those funds. That's an option. Long-term, if we were going to get into next year budget cycle around this time, option two is actually something that I would probably begin to recommend as superintendent, that we start looking at using the vehicle and equipment reserve. As the aid comes back through, you put the aid back into the reserve and so you create for yourself a cycle where that is running. So eventually, you were going to see that from me as, as a recommendation moving forward to address some of the comptroller's concerns. What questions do you have to me? Discussion amongst the board.
Becky, can I ask you, just while this screen is up, is this, the money that comes back from the state, the same 86 cents per dollar?
Dr. Capron, is it our transportation aid at the 86 cents on every dollar?
A little tiny lesson added, something in the order of 82 to 84.
Well, it's still a lot.
It's still a lot.
It's a lot.
Okay. So every time you're talking about spending $200,000, you're going to get $150,000 or something like that back.
Yeah, we are.
Oh, well, that's nice.
Again, that's one thing that makes schools so intriguing to pay attention to the way our systems work. So the more, the more we place into anything driven by BOCs or through the state, the transportation that generates aid, we're making an expenditure, but we're going to end up with revenue on the other side, in the next year, in the next year. So sometimes people will say, well, why can't we just buy that? It's going to, it's going to generate BOCs aid. In the first year, you still have to pay. So your budget has to be prepared to handle the payout. And then most of our, I shouldn't say most, I'm probably, that's too broad a term, but we get BOCs aid back somewhere between, you know, September and November, depending on the type of aid that's coming back through. So we do use our reserves to, in our budgets, to make sure we have healthy cash flow. But that's sort of the way that BOCs works. We spend, or BOCs aid works. We spend and then we get revenue on the back half. We put through, in terms of our school, we are so good at maximizing aid, that anytime we can do that, we are doing that.
So in a way, it's, it's a chance for our community to get back money that we pay as New York taxpayers.
You got it. I actually love that. I often talk about school budgets that way. So in the state of New York, right, we're taxed. They take our money, they take it up to the state, and then they decide how they're going to spend it, right? So anytime as a school district that we can be strategic and stick our hand up there and take back our piece, that's exactly what we do. And that has a lot to do with our need, right? So our aid levels are really driven by the needs of our community. So if we were in a wealthier community, we would drive less aid. If we were in a community that had much lower socioeconomic need, we would drive more aid. There are some schools that are getting 98 cents back on every dollar based on the need of their, of their school community. So giving you that idea, if we're at 86 cents back on every dollar, we're not at 32 cents back on every dollar, right? We aren't, we're not a wealthy district, but we're also not the, the most poor in our area. Great question.
Bruce, how much is in the vehicle reserve?
About $600,000.
Okay, so regardless, the way I see it, if we don't have a bus this year, we've got to have one next year.
Yes.
So if we, it'd be nice to have a bus both years like we usually do. So this year, perhaps, we bite the bullet, we take the $200,000 out of the reserves, buy the bus, doesn't cost anybody anything, but my question is, we'll still get $172,000 back regardless?
Oh, yeah, it'll come back over the five years.
It comes back over five years. Coming every year as part of the plan, okay? That being said, then my thought process is just, we, we, I don't think we should skip a year based on my experience of buying a bus. So why don't we consider buying it out of the reserves? That'll still leave us, that's one-third of that account, it still leaves us with $400,000.
And I need to correct, it's right, the balance right now is closer to $500,000.
Okay, well, ish.
I just wanted to.
All right, that, that, that's fine. Ish. And then next year, going into next year or a year from now, we, we, hopefully, we could be back on track and could buy our bus. But as this year would be zero, not a penny for the bus. And getting back to that, the contingent budget that you, you're telling, describing to us, to me, that sounds like a train wreck personally. I, I don't see like a win, maybe win, I just see lose, lose. So that being said, if we have the opportunity to just use the $172,000, whatever it is, out of reserves and go back out on the 17th at a 0%, then that's win-win, in my opinion. That, that's win-win. We don't, everything that I had read in my past and heard tonight, the contingency budget, we don't, we don't need to go that route, I don't think. It's much simpler to just, let's, let's give them kind of what, what they, I think they want, 0% on the 17th, not pay for a bus on the 17th. We have a bus and we move forward. That, that's, that's my thinking personally, out loud, what I mean.
I think my perspective and just kind of weighing in on it, that has the board, like, why didn't we go out at 0% to begin with, right? Why didn't we do that? So we, we have, we should acknowledge in this moment that the 0% for us actually means that we're going to expend from the reserves. I'll use the bus as an example. I don't want to, I don't want to get caught up in the hype around electric buses. I'm not, I'm not interested in the debate this evening. I think just in general, I am personally, as the superintendent of Caledonia, Mumford, very hopeful that they continue to move down the line, this concept. We will go from having buses that are costing us $200,000 a piece to buses that are costing us $400,000 a piece, if that's what happens to us. So part of why we even have begun growing some of our reserves is because we're getting ready, we're, we're assuming that we've got risk coming our way. So why do we use reserves? We, we use them to offset risk. We know that we have a risk coming and our vehicle and equipment reserve isn't large enough to handle the risk that's coming. So just want to throw that out there, that it's not that we, it's not that we don't care, it's that we care both in the short term and in the long term around how the district is going to afford what I will call mandates from the state that probably are not, from what I'm gearing, coming with aid to help us buy these things, although the law is going to require it. So how is that going to happen for us? We have, the first year out, we have to pay for it in cash. Like, we have to upfront the money. So if we're building a budget, this is, I, this is so complicated, really. But if we're building a budget and let's say that we have to buy in order to keep pace with what's going to be expected from us in 10 years, that we have to buy two electric buses a year to like get ourselves first going, we would have to pay the $800,000 out of our first budget. So we have to pay it. Then, in the next year, we get it back in aid. So it will help us in the next year for not having it cost us quite as much. But in that first year, anytime you're assuming risk, you're increasing your budget. If we have to increase our budget and state aid doesn't increase to match it, the only other place to fix that is to go out for a levy. So we, we grow concerned around having a levy in one year that's 2% and then having a levy in another year that shoots up to 10, because we're going to have to try to figure out how to weigh our cost. So I think, I just want to say that out loud because I know that when we were building the budget, the board was aware that if we are going out at 0, that has implications for us. Not just in this moment, but it actually impedes that long-range planning. So just want to put that out there.
And that's a perfect analogy of how New York State handcuffs districts, whether it be small districts like us or even larger districts with their, with their mandates. That, that's just an example, please. If, if, if you learn one thing extra tonight, decide, well, maybe we'll go out at 0%, keep in mind the handcuffs that the mandates, several mandates New York State throws at us. I mean, that's just beyond our control. Thank you.
I want to just take a moment to express, like, to, to back up a little, right? Like, we're talking about the bus, but everyone's really here for the budget.
Yeah.
That's, that's the meat of, of the money that we spent. I want to back up to the night of the budget vote, sitting in the district office and getting the no vote back and feeling very disappointed in myself that we weren't able to bring the budget to the community that they wanted and they could accept and tolerate. Disappointed in myself that we didn't do that. So for me, when that happened, I saw two problems. The first problem, the problem we're here for tonight is we need to pass a budget for our district that keeps our educational standards high. And that's the priority at this point. But there's another component where in my 12 years as a school board member, it has felt like we've had a good communication stream with the community. And we, I, I was caught off guard with the vote. So I feel like, yes, we have the budget to deal with tonight and that's our immediate concern, but we also have to build, rebuild some communication streams with the community so that that doesn't happen again, right? Because nobody wants to be in this seat. And clearly, we weren't hearing a part of the community because they came out and voted and we heard it that way. So I, I, I would be remiss in my 12 years, this is the hardest thing we've done, to not mention that to you. So I want you to know that we've, we have heard and aside from the budget tonight that we hopefully can gain consensus on moving forward, it is on my agenda to make sure something like that doesn't happen again.
Thank you.
You know, as being part of the community, we're volunteers. We're trying to make the best decisions we can make. And this year at least, I think, like John said, 0% tax increase is something everybody needs in this day and age. And using the reserves for that would really work well this year.
I think, Becky, if you would like to explain a little bit why we got these extra funds in reserve, it's because the COVID money and that we're trying to use it strategically and not use it all at once to buy, to have new teachers and things like that that you're going to have to lay off if you don't have any, the money isn't there anymore. And so we've been putting money, this, using the reserves strategically so it can be used down the line in future years. But as you say, this is sort of a crisis in that we, we need to pass a budget and we don't want to go to contingency because nothing else. We want the community to be able to use our school buildings and our, our things. You know, I think that would be hardship on the community.
So I do think that that's something that the, the board, so I, I guess where I'm reflecting on what happened on Tuesday, right? It's around, we, we don't mean to live in an echo chamber. It's not how we mean to function. But we, in terms of the operations, when you're living inside the walls of the school, you do understand a little bit more about how things are moving and why things matter. So I, I feel like I just need to say to the board that I, being part of the decision-making, I know that right from the get-go, your goal was to put a budget up that the community could support, like, right from the get-go, and that it would have in it what the students needed. So yes, I will speak a little bit about the reserves this evening. So I think it's not so, I, I don't know. And this is a question I actually had for the board, that I was going to be intrigued to have conversation with you all come early June around reserve management. So as you know, we have the comptroller's report. And in the comptroller's report, when the comptroller is speaking to our reserves and how much money we have in reserves, and then talking about fund balance in ways that made it sound to our community like we collect more taxes than what we actually need to expend. That part for us, because we know how the budget is built and we understand the nuts and bolts of it. Like, when I read that, I read it and think, well, the comptroller wasn't sitting in the room when the budget was built. And so not understanding necessarily who we are in Caledonia, Mumford and the kinds of risks that, that, that come for us financially that we need to mitigate in order to make sure that our community is well taken care of, but we do know that. So the decisions inside our budget as we're making those decisions are definitely based on who we are. We have a different tax structure than districts even five miles down the road. We don't have as much business as businesses 10 miles down the road. So if something were to happen to us in terms of a business no longer paying in, we've got to be prepared to handle back to that original concept. We don't want to tax our community at 2% one year and 10% the next. So the reserves for us do give us the balance to be able to keep ourselves pretty healthy. So let's talk about the reserves and that, let's call it a skyrocket that you see in here. This is actually coming off of what you're going to refer to as COVID. So if you guys recall, we, we shut down our schools. We still paid our teachers, we paid our staff, our kids were sent home. We weren't running electric, we weren't running our buses, we weren't using fuel. So through the time when our school was shut down, we actually did end up with fund balance. So we moved the fund balance into reserves in order to save it for a rainy day, to be able to offset costs that are coming. We didn't have to, the next year, increase taxes massively. We've been able to stay steady. So then the federal government actually released the federal government actually released stimulus money. And when the stimulus money came out, we got just over, I'm going to say like $2.5 million, or right there in the ballpark, around $2.5 million. So, what you would have seen if you were here, in the way that we were delivering that money, is that that money actually allowed us to pass, they call it pass-through. So, oftentimes grants you're not allowed to use pass-through. So, if the grant comes out and says, with this grant, you must buy a teacher, you must pay a teacher, you must use that grant money for that purpose. The COVID money actually came out with some pretty large, and it was meant to take money and stimulate the economy. So, I know that the federal government, based on the way they delivered this, wanted us to, I don't know, hire five social workers or two more nurses, that in turn, we would lay off once that money was no longer there and the money would not be stimulating the economy. For us, the stimulus money has gone into the reserves where it is living, it is drawing interest, it is using that interest to add to our revenue, it is creating resources for us to be able to create cycles that generate revenue inside the walls of our school, and also preparing us for rainy days. We would not have reserves at this level if it were not for the COVID money. So, you're seeing the COVID money in action here. Thank you for asking that question.
And can you also mention how some of the school districts did get more teachers and they're laying them off?
They did, and they did lay them off. And we, you know, we benefited from that in terms of needing to hire staff that's getting laid off in other districts, 100%. We just, we chose not to use what we would refer to as one-time money to create a reoccurring expense when the revenue was not going to be reoccurring. So, in a school this size, where our revenue is not very much, right? You don't want to take this giant influx of revenue and then go buy things that you'd have to pay for year after year after year after year. So, instead, they went in here and it's generating back for this community year after year after year, including a larger capital project than what we've had in the past because we were able to put more money into our capital reserves. So, in my time here, I've been accustomed to capital projects that don't actually touch the classroom. And this capital project that the community has voted and supported is actually going to address some of our learning spaces. Our libraries were in desperate need of being, you know, upgraded and having a facelift. And the same is true of our auditorium. And both of those areas are going to happen this year at zero percent addition to taxpayer because we used reserves to do that. We'll generate aid. We use the reserves, we generate capital aid. So, I think for the board this evening, you know, you're two, you really have two decisions. You have to decide proposition one, proposition two. Are we moving forward with proposition one and in which ways? Are you going to go out at zero percent? Are you going to change the amount of the tax levy? Are you going to move right to a contingent? The other option, the other decision you have to make this evening is, are you going to buy a school bus? Are you going to take it completely off and only have one proposition if we go back out to vote? Are you going to buy a school bus and ask the community to pay for it over time? Are you going to use reserves to pay for a school bus? Two decisions that will allow us to move forward and communicate back out to our community what our next steps are.
Bruce, could I ask quick, what's the last, as of today, what's the last date we can buy a diesel school bus?
I know it's been pushed out. I want to, is it 2032?
I want to say 32, yes.
Yeah. I think that's what's in the regulations right now. But as Dr. Chanel highlighted, there's an awful lot of discussion about how that would occur and even whether the energy-supporting grants that originated, you know, are going to be sustained. So...
That was definitely one of my main concerns, seeing that voted down, is that we'd be up against it. My initial estimation was it was going to be '27 and we only have a couple more years to purchase these things, but '32 is much more workable.
They just moved it out. Great question.
There's an extension with this recent budget that was passed.
Great question.
So, it takes a little pressure off that situation because I know in area districts, the electric bus proposals were voted down. So...
Which we project will happen here, just in general, the amount of money and the infrastructure, like, it's a lot to change and understand.
So, from what I've learned about the contingency budget, that we would not meet the needs of our district and the educational success that we've grown accustomed to, right? Like, we would not be able to do certain things for our student body that we normally do. We would not be able to make certain purchases that would really hold our hands in many ways. So, the contingency budget for me as a board member is not a feasible response.
Agreed. Agreed.
I have some concerns with that though, because the community spoke loudly. And like what you said, I feel like I hear from folks all the time, and I heard nothing this cycle. You know, I had seven phone calls as a board member the entire year. And I would expect, if there was a lot of concern from the community, thank you for coming tonight, that it would have been louder. And so, I was just as surprised as everyone else that it was a no, but at the same time, it's a no and the community really meant it. And so, for us, I know we're sitting and we're receiving it and we're feeling it fully, but why was it a no? Is it the money? Is it the product we're delivering? You know, whether we like it or not, we're in a customer service business. You know, is the service not what the community is expecting? You know, what do we need to improve on to justify receiving that money from the community? There's a lot of blue-collar people here and it's harder and harder, and we say that, and it's true. I don't know, I don't want to offend people by saying, hey, we understand that you're not happy, but our priorities are still our priorities and we feel like we ultimately need these, and asking them to set their needs aside. Granted, it's not a significant dollar figure per 100,000 this year to go out, especially if we go out at zero, but that budget's still going to build next year. And that's a lot of what I heard. I made some phone calls the other day. It's just, it just seems like a never-ending growth for fewer kids. Yes, it was pretty loud and it was new, kind of new to me. So, I have concerns about just rolling it, but...
I certainly think that if you get, go to a zero, you're just talking about what we had last year and that it's not going to go up. And you're also addressing the concerns people have about the reserves and say, why don't you use some of the reserves? And we'll say, okay, we're going to use some of our reserves to make this difference. There are other expenditures that people in the village especially are going now have to be paying for, can I say it? All of a sudden, we're paying $30 a month for garbage that we've never done before. And to even think of anything more is like the school budget is something where we could have a say. The same thing happened with the fire department. People said, no, we don't want to, we don't see the need for it and we're not going to pay for it.
I agree, Mike. I believe that the community voted no, and there's an assumption that it's all based on the numbers, but we have to explore as a board what's really going on there. And I see that as a longer-term, not problem, but opportunity for us to explore in the year to come. I think that's important. I don't think we can lose sight of that. And I think that's going to take time and commitment from us, and I believe we're all willing to do that.
I agree with what Liz just said, but to piggyback on Michael for one second. And I hate to be the only one in the room with sour feelings towards New York State and the state government, but as long as this school is located in New York State, everything Michael just said is true. But what can we do about it? We have less students, we have less students. So, why did the budget go up 2.3%? We have less students. How about, can you just give one example? Another handcuff the state has thrown upon is like something to do with, I don't know, with the reviews, quickly.
Like, are the APPR requirements around that? So, just in general, the way, because people do ask, right, about administrators. I assume that's where you're going with this. So, under the regulations for the annual professional performance review, our teachers have to be evaluated. And so, there's quite a bit of time that principals have to spend in classrooms, making sure that they're observing lessons. And you want that, you want that, right? So, I can talk about it from an evaluation standpoint, but I think more importantly, it's that when you're hiring building principals that were teachers themselves and you put two teachers in a room watching kids learn and you allow that back and forth around how the learning is going, everyone is growing their practice and kids' needs are being met. So, to me, the evaluation is what the state mandated. The glory of that is that you're really supposed to be principals spending about 70% of your day inside classrooms, working with teachers and working on curriculum instruction. So, for us to cut administrators means that we would have no one at all ways, ever. You know, people would be tied up, unable to handle the student day-to-day piece based on the requirements that come from that.
That's just a little thing. I'm stunned. Thank you.
Yep, we have to deal with it.
Well, and our expenses do continue to go up, right? So, like, just thinking about healthcare, like, healthcare in particular is a big expense for us each year and it continues to go up. And I was at a meeting last month where they were talking about, similar to our reserves here, we have money set aside in what you'll call a reserve, like a savings account, that we use across the buying power of those of us that are in a shared group. And how much money is expended out of those buying groups has to do with the wellness of the folks that are getting their insurance through schools. And so, I learned a lot last month about those costs and how much they're skyrocketing. That's something that we have to keep talking about. It's an expense that we continue to accrue and we don't have good control over keeping it at bay. It just keeps coming, it changes, and our budget has to match that. So, less kids. I did say this when we were in our, in our actual budget hearing, someone brought that up about less kids. I do think in general, some of the decisions that the board would have, you would have in front of you, you're not prepared, I'm going to say I'm not prepared, to talk about what that would look like for us long-term. If we really wanted to do something different, we wanted to take the budget and say that we need to shrink the budget. I don't think we shrink the budget tonight at this table because we don't know what the community, how the community would want us to do that, right? The minute we start eliminating, let's say we eliminated AP classes at the high school, or we eliminate a certain section of our athletics, or we say we have more clubs and activities than any school our size, let's cut our clubs and activities. Like, we could actually be cutting things that our community then comes and blows our budget down because we cut all the wrong things. I do think we should go into a year of exploration. I think we, if you decide that you're going to offset this budget, go out at zero and pay through reserves, I think we do have to dedicate, to your point, Mike, what was the community saying to us?
Thanks for saying that, because you put words to what I was thinking, is we need to have, next year's budget planning needs, I thought it was very good this year from sitting here, but next year, I think we need to have a different lens looking at it where it's a deliberate process instead of, shoot, we've got 30 days to pull this off. Yeah, but I guess that's what the community is asking us to do. Yeah.
I think we can all agree with that.
Yep.
Are there more questions for Dr. Chanel or Bruce regarding what she has presented this evening?
Thank you.
I think it's good. One thing I'm just concerned about that I mentioned to you is in the writing, when people go to vote, assuming that we're going to do the zero percent tax levy, and the same thing for the bus. The way that it's written, and apparently it's the way that it's got to be written, the zero percent is in the top line, but later on, it says shall be raised by a levy of tax upon the taxable property, but we're saying it's going to be zero. So, we have to be very clear to the public that it's zero. It's not going to go up.
I agree.
And, you know, and is that first line going to be on the ballot?
When we create the ballot, we will actually send that language off to the attorney, for the attorney to make sure that our compositions are written the way they need to be. I can certainly have the conversation with Sarah around making sure that on the ballot, that it is very clear to the taxpayer that we are not levying a tax.
We're not increasing the levy, yeah?
We're not increasing the levy.
Not increasing the levy.
Yeah, that is why it's worded that way, right? They are still going to pay school taxes, just they don't have to increase to it, which is why it's worded.
An increase, that's right. Yeah. So, yeah, the terms of budget levy are a little confusing.
I've been thinking about that a lot the last couple of days, of like, how could I have worded that differently? Maybe we don't have a lot of clarity, we use too much jargon, like, all of that, right? And reflecting on, what do we do now? If we decide that we're going back out for a vote, we need to speak very differently between now and June 15th to the community so that we're being very clear.
I think I'm hearing the board's will right now. It's to move forward with Dr. Chanel's recommendation. If that is the will, then I may suggest that we motion to withdraw the other additions to the meeting.
That would be two, three, and five.
Let's do, if that is...
Do you want to vote on the first and then after, if that is successful, then withdraw?
That's a good idea. I'm going to start with a new business, item number one. Adoption of the proposed 2025-2026 annual school budget with zero percent tax levy. Resolve to adopt a proposed budget of expenditures for the fiscal year 2025-2026 in the amount of $21,660,678. And for the purposes shown in the statement of estimated expenditures adopted by the Board of Education, by one and the same is approved and the amount thereof shall be raised by a levy of tax upon the taxable property of the school district. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
A second.
Second.
Any discussion?
I'd like to say it's not in the resolution, obviously, but we're bringing this back to the community if we approve this with humility, understanding that we need to take a look at next year's budget. And by the community granting us this opportunity to put this back for a vote, they're affording us the luxury of having 11 months to do a really good job building something out for them.
Thank you for saying that. Any other discussion?
Again, somehow or another, you need to say that the difference between the budget, the budget and the levy, right? Am I saying that right?
The difference?
Is going, the gap is being filled by, from the reserves.
Yes.
And I think people need to know that because there's been a lot of concern about the reserves.
Right. And I think that's heard is a very good point. And Dr. Chanel will make sure that the ballot is...
Well, and our communications forward, like, another newsletter and making sure that we're making that very clear. Communications out to the community in different venues to make sure that we're making that clear.
Right.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, that motion is carried. Can I have a motion to withdraw two and three, please?
I'll make it.
Can I have a second?
Second. Can you please repeat what those are?
Yes, of course. We're going to withdraw number, item number two, adoption of the proposed 2025-2026 annual school budget with a unknown percent tax levy. And we're also going to remove adoption of a contingent budget from our agenda this evening.
Correct.
I'm sorry, did I give a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed, that motion is carried. We're going to move to number five. Authorization to purchase bus and issue bands. Resolved at the Board of Education.
I would go back and have the comments.
I'm sorry.
With consensus around that.
I got lost in all of these motions. We're going to start with four. Authorization to appropriate and expend from the 2023 vehicle equipment reserve. Resolved at the Board of Education of the Caledonia-Munford Central School District is hereby authorized to purchase a 66-passenger school bus for student transportation and aggregate maximum cost not to exceed $200,000, inclusive of trade and value with sum of so much thereof as may be necessary to be raised by an expenditure of $200,000 from the district's existing 2023 vehicle equipment reserve established by the... established by the voters of the district on May 16th, 2023. And it further resolve that the Board of Education shall be authorized to enter into purchase contracts for this school bus on terms satisfactory to the Board of Education. May I have a motion, please?
Yep.
A second?
Second.
Discussion?
That's the way to go.
All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? That motion is carried. I would ask for a motion to withdraw number five, authorization to purchase a school bus and issue bonds.
I'll make a motion to withdraw.
Thank you. May I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? That motion is carried. We now have to appoint election inspector and officials for the upcoming second vote. Resolve that the Board of Education appoint head election inspector Doug Lowry and election inspectors Karen Richleykey and Fred Permitson for the school budget vote June 17th, 2025. May I have a motion, please?
Yes.
A second?
Yep.
Discussion?
I abstain.
All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? That motion is carried. We are going to move to executive session and return after that. Resolve that the Board of Education return, or I'm sorry, adjourn to executive session at 7:11 PM to discuss the employment, employee history of particular persons, matters of leading to the appointment, confidential student records protected by FERC. May I have a motion, please?
I'll make it.
A second?
Say, John, say second.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah.
Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? That motion is carried. Thank you very much. Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
We're going to move to executive session. We are back from executive session. Resolve that the Board of Education return to regular session at 7:23 PM. May I have a motion, please?
Make a motion.
May I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? That motion is carried. We're going to move on to personnel number one, resignation for purpose of retirement of transportation director. Resolve that the Board of Education upon the recommendation of the superintendent, accept with regret and best wishes, the resignation for the purpose of retirement, Mr. Ron Otto, Transportation Director, effective June 30th, 2025. May I have a motion, please?
Yep.
A second?
Second.
Discussion?
Very sad.
It is.
I just, I would like to say just thank you to Ron Otto. There is nobody that pays closer attention to buses coming in and out of here and the safety of our kids and Ron. His spirit will live on and entomb me here. He will be a legend. I will miss him personally and professionally.
All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? That motion is carried. We're moving to adjournment. Resolve that the Board of Education adjourn the meeting of May 23rd, 2025 at 7:24 PM. May I have a motion, please?
Yep.
A second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? That motion is carried. Good night. Anyone that wants to stay after and ask questions or have concerns or want to engage in conversation with Dr. Chanel, please do.